Okay, is there a motion to reconvene as a council and see the executive session minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In executive session, we approved a new contract, three-year contract for the manager. And if anybody would like a copy, it would be provided by the town clerk. First up on the agenda. Can we also?
Yeah, just Mr. Penn.
We're going to have a moment of silent meditation. Look to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the consent agenda. Is there anything to be removed before we approve it?
Should we remove the minutes? Because I know some corrections were made.
Nineteen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special town council meeting minutes of June 25th, 2012, workshop notes of June 14th, 2012.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that the town council minutes of June 19, 2012 be accepted with the corrections that the council has noted.
All right, there was one correction that I think was, I think Lisa had it correct. It was page 13 of the 19 minutes of the 19th town council meeting.
Thirteen, page 18.
It's the la, it's page 13. Oh, it's in the insert.
The addendum, I should say.
Lisa handed this out, Frank, I don't think you have it in there. Oh, you've got it right there. And it's page 13. The motion was to approve, let's see. Motion was made by councilor, seconded by Councilwoman Dophie, to amend the motion, excuse me, to, yeah, to amend the motion authorizing the purchase of patriotic munting in the council contingency for the fiscal year. And Lisa had 2012 13, that's correct. We have a hiring free, excuse me, a budgetary freeze, spending freeze. So we specifically wanted it to be in next year's budget. So that was correct.
I picked it up.
Okay, all right, so we'll leave it at 2012 13.
Motion to pass the town council meeting minutes of June 19 with the changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay.
I wasn't here.
Good idea. All right, first public forum, is there anybody who would like to speak at our public forum? Okay, councilors' report.
How exciting is this? It's been quite a while since we had a town solicitor report.
Oh, wait, let me turn this down so we can hear you.
Do you want her to go to the microphone?
Andrew, is it a little quieter? What I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is the legislature and yet another example of just how little they care about cities and towns passed revisions to the Open Records Act. This isn't going to impact U.S. council members too terribly because you don't ordinarily deal with open records act issues. That's primarily Lisa, Bill, and I and Laura actually also to a certain extent. The changes are pretty ridiculous, as you would anticipate, because the legislature excludes itself from these regulations. So they don't care how on earth they make it for cities and towns who can't afford to do what they want them to do. Or not what they want them to do, but what other outside interests want the legislature to make or do. Among the things we're going to have to now do is designate an open records officer. And that person is going to be the single recipient of all open records requests. And then it's going to be responsible for sort of divvying them out. That person, just to make it that much more onerous, is going to have to go through some kind of training program that the Attorney General's department is going to have to cook up. And then she's going to have to be certified as trained in it. And you guessed it, Lisa wins the lottery. And God bless her, when I called her and I said, Lisa, unfortunately, you're kind of the obvious person for this, she said, absolutely. So she, until I told her she had to go for training. And then she wanted to take it back, but she, you know, she willingly stepped right up and said she would do it. There's new records that are now public for the first time. There's, and Dave, well, I'm going to actually be chatting with you about this because of specific new requirements with police departments and what they have to provide and the time within which they have to provide it. There's also a 10-day time limit for your initial response. You can get a 20-day extension, but you now have to explain in your, within the 10 days, why, specifically why you need the 20 days, why it's required to be that much longer. If you don't respond in a timely manner, then any costs you could have recouped for retrieval or copying of information are lost to you. And of course, there's increased penalties if you screw this up. So Lisa and I are going to be talking, Dave and I are going to be talking, because we don't want to intentionally screw anything up. And it's going to add burdens to Lisa, to Dave, to Manny, to Bill, to Laura, for which, of course, the General Assembly is not going to pay anybody. And it's probably going to result in absolutely no benefit to anyone. But I did want you to be aware that that act passed and the governor signed it, and you should appropriately thank your elected officials. That's all.
I believe that the town legally, if it's really onerous, we can charge reasonable cost for copying.
It's not reasonable by any stretch of the imagination. There's limitations. You have to do the first hour free, and after that, I think it's $15 an hour for people's time. And the amount that you can collect for copy is not even what a commercial copy place would charge. So it doesn't, it does not compensate us for what we go through for these crazy requests. And, you know, what these things are really designed to do is to address things like Tim White, the Channel 12 guy, the investigative guy, you know? He's out there complaining constantly about how cities and towns are not responsive to him. I couldn't tell you the last time, Tim White probably doesn't even know where Hopkinton is, you know, when he was in a town this size. And, sorry. Yeah, we don't want it to know, Lisa's saying we don't want it to know. The kinds of requests that we deal with, day in, day out, are the requests that are meant basically to harass us. I don't know a better way to say it. The ones that, you know, people are making us jump through hoops, not really because they need information or anything else, because it's a handy way to harass the town. That's the stuff that we're dealing with day in, day out down here. It's, that's not, you know, the big issue that the legislature appears to be concerned with isn't an issue in towns like this. You know, all it does for us in a town this size where we don't have someone we can commit to this full-time is create added burdens. And it means that if Lisa's working on something with a taxpayer, when that request comes in, she's going to literally drop everything she's doing to deal with this foolish request. And I think that's too bad. And I don't think that they think about this stuff at all when they pass these.
Other than, you know, plus any person that does it has to understand what the confidentiality limits, there's certain things that are private.
Well, Lisa, Bill, Laura, all, we've been doing this for six years now, Bill, more or less with me and Lisa, but they always check with me when it's, when it's any sensitive kind of information, I'm always in the loop on the thing. So what you end up with is at least three people's time usually taken up responding to one of these requests. And it's just too bad that they keep adding these burdens and adding these burdens to the cities and towns that, and taking money away from us at the same time it's bad.
Lisa?
In the event that I'm not in the office.
Well, one of the things we have to do, Lisa, is we have to come up with a plan that we're going to certify to the Attorney General for how we're going to handle these requests. So you and I will sit down and figure that sucker out.
Well, you know, I have to say that over the past six years, and I understand, I can, in between all the lines there, and you were very frank about it, but some requests have come in where they wanted.
I was trying to be so restful.
They, they wanted an enormous amount of material and for a little town, and they were, it was seeking it from all 39 cities and towns.
Yep.
And just asking for things. And then there are residents who reasonably want to have little things. And I remember in the past that when, for instance, if you want, if I in the past wanted to do some research and I wanted to look into the council record, I would come into the office, in the clerk's office, and I would ask for the minutes of the council and look through the books, and I'd find what I wanted and they get copied, or I'd ask Lisa for an audit.
So appropriate that way.
Oh, yeah.
If someone comes in, either with their minutes, I can still bring them up the hall.
Of course. Sure, of course. But, so anyway, what has happened, though, is people don't do that anymore, and I have to say they've gotten a little lazy. And they just send a letter and they'll say, I want seven different things, and you've got a number of days to do it. And I now understand, though, it's the bigger request that we've had in the past that just, everybody had to drop everything, and it was, it was very burdensome.
Well, one thing that people do is there are commercial enterprises out there, say, who want to do something with respect to our tax sales or something like that, and now send requests to all of the cities and towns looking for information so that they can, so they can make money basically off of the information. So here we are scrambling under these unreasonable time deadlines and not getting properly compensated to provide the information for outfits that are using the information for profit-making purposes, you know? And I, I just don't know, you know, it sounds wonderful when the, you know, common cause and these people say, oh, we really need this, and, you know, we don't really need this stuff. And cities and towns this size, it's just, it's a huge burden. It's a huge burden, and it's really too bad. It's just too bad.
Frank and Barbara?
Yeah, I just had two comments and one question, I guess. First one, it seems like it's Big Brother all over again with this stuff, with all the stuff that they want to ask us to do. That's the second one. And I'm glad Lisa stepped up so we don't have to hire a separate person for the records officer.
We were going to make it you, Frank.
Well, yeah. But anyway, yeah, so I'm glad Lisa stepped up to the plate. The only other question I have for everyone is, it's got to be on the website by, what was it?
Now.
September 1. Are we going to be able to get that on there with, hopefully? Think G.I.S. can get it there? I don't know.
We'll slap it together. We'll slap it.
Yelson, Frank?
Yes, thanks.
Harper?
I have a question, I think it's more for Bill than for Pat. What's the, I mean, what was the position of the League of Cities and Towns? How did they come to our assistance on this, or did they not?
I'd like to know that, too. But I don't know if Bill can answer.
Well, I mean, he may not know the answer.
It's not.
But I'd really be interested in finding out what kind of work they did with us or for us, because that's something that does affect us, you know, immediately. Can, I assume that you may not know that answer. Do?
They're all lobbyists.
Well, I guess, well, I just find out.
They recommend. But I'd have to go off on an ask exactly what your goal was.
Could you just find out, since Pat and I both want to know, just what in the world they did to assist us? Yeah? Oh, and I want to make it clear, if anybody's listening, that the town of Hopkinton is always, my recollection is going back to when Josephine Langley, who was a clerk, and that was when I got involved in things. And the town has made every effort to provide information. And these things that are in here that they say you have to do, we've done in the past already. So it's just when they pile on things like the, having a records officer, okay, fine, it could be Lisa, but now she's got to go upstate and take a morning to do that or something. And hopefully, once you're certified, you don't have to recertify every year?
I think she has to recertify every year.
It's every year.
They're going to get costs for that?
Probably pay a fee.
Probably fees.
Other than your day.
Oh, well. Scott, you have another comment?
I'd like to know specifically, somebody could find out, I'd like to know how Senator Omar and Representative Kennedy voted on these bills, the legislation, because bills don't get approved in the General Assembly unless legislators, senators, and representatives vote for them. I assume that the governor approved it. I know sometimes governors don't sign legislation and let it become law without their signature. So I'd like to know if Governor Chaffee approved it, or did he allow it to become law without his signature? And also, how did Senator Omar and Representative Kennedy vote on it?
That's how legislation passes, right?
Tell me anything?
Can you get that on the website?
I think so.
I'd need a bill, I'd have to have a bill number.
I don't see the bill number on there.
Yeah, it's in here. The legislation is H-7555A and S-2652A.
That should be on.
It's right at the top, second, sixth paragraph.
It should be right on the.
On the website. Any other comments or questions? All right, next up, council president's report. I sent you a little note so you could think about it ahead, ahead of time. And I thought maybe any of the, any of the councillors that attended the Charahoe graduation, if you wanted to make any comments. It's certainly been a, quite a year for Charahoe in very positive ways. Did anybody want to add anything about the graduation? Frank?
Yeah, I attended my first graduation with Charahoe, and it was, I thought it was great. Everybody was, I guess the speeches were really what took me back, a lot of the inspirational speeches, especially one from the student advisor person, I forget his name, but he just really was well-liked by the students, and it was really just inspirational for me, and I enjoyed myself a lot, so.
Anyone else?
I thought it was a very vocal and very friendly bunch of kids. They were definitely bouncy, more bouncy than the last several years. They were certainly enjoying themselves, which I thought was just great. I mean, it's their graduation after all. I do have a comment that I had planned on also going to the school board and asking about. We have, or they have in the last several years, used the URI, the URI auditorium, the arena, which has to be an expensive site, and it was almost impossible to hear the speeches. The speeches, you heard every few words. The whole speeches of all the kids especially were garbled entirely. We were sitting on the side, that might have been a problem. The echo was incredible. But I cannot imagine how anyone, unless maybe they were directly in front of the speaker, could understand it. We simply, I mean, Frank, you may have heard some of it, but it's in pieces. Mr. Ritchie, I think, had a marvelous, he asked the class of 2024 their views, and that was wonderful, except I couldn't hear it. You know, you heard two words out of these nice little children. So I thought that was really a problem, and they pay a lot of money, it's an unnecessary issue. They need to solve it somehow, because we just, if we sit there for two and a half hours, I really do want to hear the speeches, and especially since the kids put so much effort into it. But otherwise, it was bouncy, I have to say. They had a great time.
Any other comments from?
Yes. I would like to note that this council is the only council of the three Charahoe towns that, majority of the council are Charahoe graduates. Council President Thompson, Vice President Buck, and myself are Charahoe graduates. And my observation is, I agree on the sound, you cannot really enjoy the graduation because of just listening. On the positive side, a lot of the community leaders are there, and we have four councillors there. And Hopkins Council did change its meeting night just to be there, and I think it says a lot about this town council. I would also say that recognition was given to Bob Mitchell, who was the principal, who was going on to be an assistant superintendent up in Cumberland. Mrs. Sinwell, who I understand is going to take a job, was going to be principal, now she's going to be in a job up to upon a Gansett. She was part of the ceremony of, you know, giving out the diplomas. And I did notice there was Nathan Blacklight, who I don't know, but I'm definitely his great grandfather, had been paid Blacklight.
I knew you were going to talk about relatives. Are you really?
He was on the town council in the 1950s, so I'm a native, so what can I say? But anyways, I, I can only say I can remember my own graduation in 71, over at Wood River Junction, on one of those flatbeds, they had flatbeds in Forall Farms, and so things have changed, class of 71, so for that, I'm not going to talk anymore.
That's fine. Oh, but just so you'll know, last year Richmond had to change their meeting night because it was on Tuesday, so, I mean, you know, it's what you do.
We do what we do, we do what we have to do. Actually, this was my last Charahoe graduation as a Hopkinton town councillor.
For this year.
For this year.
For next year, whatever.
For the next, yeah, next two years, anyway. Bobby took the words right out of my mouth. They were bouncy. These guys had so much fun at their graduation. It was, it was definitely a different, different atmosphere there than usual. And I really liked Barry Ritchie's comments from the 2024. I remember one of the questions was, and Barbara made a point, too, that it's tough to hear. One of the questions was, what are you going to do after graduation? And these kids are fifth graders now?
First.
First graders.
First graders.
One of the questions was, one of the answers from one of the kids was, go to the beach and eat ice cream. So there were some humorous parts of it, and 273 kids, I think?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six kids? So, and it's something I've noticed that at the end of all the graduations, even though the kids clap and everything while the kids are going up getting a diploma, the last person in line always gets the loudest applause.
I have to say, one, one other thing is, the last speaker, I think it was John Leland, he was the head of the, of the class, he was the president of the class. What a young man who was comfortable at a podium. He was the most comfortable, happy to be there and talk to you all. He was marvelous. He's got quite a career ahead of him. Speech in front of people is a joy to that child. He was great.
Thank you. Next up is recycling. And I'm sure a lot of residents already know, but it was delightful to find out that we can now mix the plastics, and you don't have to look at the bottom, and it can only be a one and a two. But just so folks know, the glass containers, as I already mentioned, but we don't have to, we don't have to worry about the numbers on the bottom or the little, the little triangle. But what can be recycled, and many of these things we already know, are the glass containers, jars of all sorts, but they don't want broken glass. They don't want any of that. Paper cardboard is still up and going. Let's see, what else? Metal cans and foil, those sorts of things. And they would prefer that it not, oh, and, and one of the do, one of the knots was pizza, pizza boxes. They don't want, they don't want the greasy pizza boxes.
But if it isn't greasy, I think it's okay.
Oh, yeah, then it's okay. And cartons, which was always a question in our household, milk cartons of all sorts, milk juice, juice boxes, all of those sorts of things can, can be recycled. So, but the big deal was the fact that we can all mix them together now, and they don't have to be separated anymore. And they don't care what container you put it in, red, blue, green, whatever, as long as they're out. That's all. Let's see, next up, the town manager's report. Bill?
Thank you. I just have three items. The first is, because of the excessive heat during the third week in June, the town had opened up two cooling centers. One was located in the council chambers and the other in the activity center at Crandall House, both of which were stocked with bottled water. Also, during the three-day period, the town distributed the remaining 12 pallets of bottled water that were left, left over from Tropical Storm Irene in August of last year. The bottled water was distributed from the Crandall House to town and area residents on June 20th and 21st of this year. In addition, we use the One Call Now emergency notification system in the town website to alert town and area residents of the cooling center openings and the water distribution program. Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency and the ProDio website were also notified of our efforts by EMA Director Ron McDonald. And I'd just like to thank Councilman Frank Lindofy, who was instrumental in that, along with Department Heads Mary Sawyer, Tim Teft, Dave Caswell, and Ron McDonald for their valuable assistance. That worked out very well. During the month, we also continued collective bargaining negotiations with the police, clerical, and professional technical employee labor unions. These negotiations are ongoing, and their current, their contracts aspire on June 30th of this year. And lastly, in late June, we hired Jolene Kuhn of Kuhn Road in Ashaway, and she began work as a temporary part-time custodian at DPW. She works 19 hours per week with no benefits, and she's going to be filling in for one of the other employers that's going to go out, and we still have another vacancy as a custodian to fill in DPW. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Next up, we need to authorize me to sign the agreement with Bacon and Company. As you know, they, they received the bid, or they were approved to do our audit. I don't remember the date.
Shall we move?
Far back. Motion to authorize the town council president's. He made it. So, I'm sorry. Second? Are there any questions?
When was it awarded?
I don't remember. Do you remember how long back? It was, it was some time ago.
That's the second.
Second year. Of the third, of three.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, discussion of ideas and methods to increase voter outreach. And one possible use might be the One Call System. That was, these, these two items were requested by a couple of councillors, so I didn't designate them on any person. And I think they both had similar ideas, and, but I thought I'd just put it all together into one. Tom, you want to start? And then I'll sit with you.
I found out some information that I need to know more information on, and about using the One Call Now, which I did not know. It's our database, and where we obtained that information. My recollection was, when we brought the 911, One Call Now system in, was those individuals were going to go through the local Yellow Pages and pull the numbers off of there. Anybody who had a listed number would get it put in. And then we advertised extensively on our websites, on tax bills, to anybody who wanted to use those, they've received the One Call Now, so they can sign up for it. So that would be such an issue. The issue that I heard about was if we use, that we cannot use the 911 database in order to do this, because it's theoretically what I, what we thought about, and Barbara and I had both come up with this, and I brought it up once before, a couple of years back, about using it to outreach people, to let them know that there was a budget vote. My initial thoughts were just to state for the fact that it was a Charahoe budget or a town municipal budget. Vote where the place was, the hours of operation, and that they could see copies of it at either the town website or the Charahoe website, because both are placed for the prospective budgets. And that was the only reason I thought of using it. I would never think about using it for any presidential elections or any elections or anything. Strictly during this last budget season, I heard from a numerous residents that, well, I didn't know the vote was last night. So we, as the town of Hopkinton, we go above and beyond what is required by the state already. And I just thought this was another tool at our use to utilize to inform the taxpayers. But until we find out that information as to where that database was formed from, I think we need to put it on hold. Because if it, if it is the 911 system, we can't use it.
Barbara?
I don't know, Frank had a question. He was finishing up.
Just a quick side note to Tom. We can develop our own list anyway, right? I mean, even independent of the 911. I just think it's a great idea to seek alternative methods to get the word out, because we really need to. It's things that affect the taxes, if they're going to go up on a permanent basis, we need to let folks know. And it only happens twice a year, once a year with Charahoe.
Yeah, you do it twice.
Yeah, twice, right. So I don't think that's really an excessive use of that system, so that's my thoughts.
Barbara? Barbara?
Go ahead. Um, one of the reasons I brought up voter outreach is because of the last municipal vote on June twelfth. Most of us in the United States of America will celebrate the signing of the Declaration of Independence this July fourth. That's this Wednesday, which is a reflection of our freedom somehow celebrating our independence. Participation in this great democracy is the worthwhile understanding that our liberty came at a very great price. We continue this tradition, this civic duty, dependent on everyone who takes the time out of their life to contribute, to vote. Almost a hundred and fifty years ago, President Abraham Lincoln spoke these words of the Gettysburg Battlefield concerning our government, that it was created of the people, by the people, for the people, so that it shall not perish from this earth. We are watching it perish. We are absolutely watching it perish. There is no of, by, or for the people when there are few to none voting. And I'm really tired of people telling me there's nothing we can do. We all learned on nine eleven that there are times when the community trumps the individual. But if there is no community, we become autocratic rule by the few, which is what is occurring now. One hundred and ninety-two people voted in Hopkinton out of six thousand four hundred and thirty-five registered voters. Two point nine percent of all our registered voters voted. And I want to thank you all very much, the hundred and ninety-two of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you that you took the time. Two hundred and four people voted in Charleston. We're not alone in this. Forty or less came to the financial meeting in Westerly. They're three times bigger than we are. Thirty-six came to the financial meeting in Richmond. This is maybe not an emergency, but it's a crisis. Ninety-two percent of the persons in this town who should know about the vote don't know, didn't vote. Our boards, our commissions, our libraries, our ambulances. Citizens are so busy with their families, I can understand how they may not know. And I will absolutely believe they do not know. I don't think they say, oh, it's a vote, I'm not going to vote. I truly believe they don't know that there have to be ways that we can do voter outreach. And I have eleven in mind here. The One Call Now is the first to inform citizens about this civic duty. I do not think that it is over and above the One Call Now system. It would be letting people know that there is a municipal vote or the presidential vote. I mean, if it's the three big votes a year, fine. I see no reason why, you're not telling people how to vote, just that they have the ability to vote and be part of this municipality. And, and I agree that we are seeming to have some problems on who can go onto this system and who can't. But if it's the One Call Now, which is where we have everyone's phone numbers and now nobody can use it unless it's an emergency, I think once in a while the municipalities should be able to choose what is a crisis to them, not just to the outside world. The number two thing, we already advertise the vote in the Westerly Sun, but we really need to vote and we need to advertise in the Providence Journal. There is no South County edition anymore, they've stopped that like two years ago, but we don't advertise in Providence Journal, and I think we need to, because people, if they don't read the Westerly Sun, they read the Providence Journal. Three, I want to ask the libraries, and I'm going to see their boards, to hand out information to all the citizens, alerting them to the vote. We now have email lists, huge email lists that we can access, to just tell people when you're going to have a vote. And the libraries are, generally have always done the, um, the Women's League of Voters has usually gone through the libraries. The libraries are crucial usually in bringing out civic responsibility like voting, and I think the libraries can help us a great deal. I want to ask the fire station and the ambulance corps to remind their members. We should be able to call the main fireperson, the main ambulance person, and say, please get your information out to your members. We need to call the Granges, the Masons, health centers, and have their boards informed and inform the public, but also the boards. The boards didn't vote. We're not just talking about citizens, I'm talking about people who should know. I'd like to see us put signs out the week ahead at the town hall, Public Works, Police, Crandall Field, those V-shaped signs maybe at the fire station or the ambulance, that just say, vote on, vote on this date, municipal vote, federal vote, but something that just says, the signs are out to remind people like the week ahead. I'd like to work with the school, that's number seven, ask the school to announce the pending vote in its newsletters and website. This is a civics lesson, it's part of educating the students to become citizens of this country. There is no reason why they cannot absolutely, on their website, send it out in letters home to the parents, remind them there is a municipal vote in Charleston or Richmond, Hopkinton, that there is a federal vote. They need to get this out. This is part of, it's a major part of our budget. I mean, they've got seventy-five to eighty percent of our budget, the least they can do is get people to vote, or give us a hand. Eight, remind all our boards and commissions to use their emails and alert their members, planning, zoning, land trust, conservation, economic. Let these people use their email list to just say, here's the vote, just tell people. And I think we should be able to do that. I don't think that's being rude, and I don't think that's undermining their freedom and independence. Nine, a forum could be hosted by the libraries a month before the vote, if it's a big vote. Maybe the council vote is a big vote and they do a forum. We could offer the town hall, I know they use the elementaries, but it depends on how many people you get, but I think a forum hosted by the libraries would be really beneficial. Postcards, sending out notes to people, which is something we don't like because it costs us money. And this is the first thing I've said that costs money, other than maybe One Call Now, is to send a postcard to everyone, reminding them, please remember the vote, to vote on X date, um, this is whatever it is on that vote. But that costs money and most people don't want to spend money. And then eleven, the problem is the twenties to thirties. How do you reach twenties to thirties? I don't know how to use Twitter, but I was asked by some of the young ones, well, put it on Twitter. I thought, how? I have no clue, but they said some police departments in some municipalities have Twitter, have access to putting things out on Twitter if there's an emergency. Now, I've never heard of it, certainly not for our town, but the kids say, put it out on Twitter, put it out on a tweet. Now, I have never done that in my life, so I have no clue how you do it in order to reach the twenty and thirty-year-olds. But we have to do something. I mean, I don't care how people vote, I just care that they vote. In this last vote, the town hall was voted down, nine, um, eighty-three, just a minute, eighty-three to eighty-six. The problem is not that it was voted down, it's that it's fifty percent. How do they want us to work as a council? How do we know whether you actually want something or you don't want something? If we don't have at least twenty percent of people telling us what they want, it's hard for us to function. We're trying to do something that maybe indeed no one wants. And if no one wants it, just let us know. We need people to come in and vote to let us know what you want us to do too. The budget's one portion, but we have many things on other issues that we need to know your point of view. I just feel really strongly about this. There is, I think, any number of things we can now do because people have these long email lists, which they can access, if they would like to do it, because God knows we're not going to force them, so that we can be a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Because right now, it's an autocracy. It's just autocracy. And that's how I feel.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Scott.
Well, I got several notes. I've been a political justice since I was a child, and I like to, if you would address the historical implications of, we used to have a financial town meeting which was on during the evening, and we went to an all-day referendum, we solved a problem that people on second shift have, and we also have the privacy of a vote because you're not there with department heads or the police, other town employees are there, and people are commenting on the budget. So you have the element of privacy. There is a concern that one person had about absentee voting, that is something that the Senate Committee could address. I'm really concerned about using the One Call Now notification system for votes and elections. I will keep an open mind on it, but I basically would like to see that kept for emergency purposes. The Secretary of State sends out a bulk mailing about all of referendum before an election, and there's no reason the town of Hopkinton couldn't send out a bulk mailing, uh, dealing with that. I, I do have concerns about the media coverage. I know I've mentioned to, I believe, Malia about the fire district, but the press, the press is limited in what they can cover, and also, uh, the attendance is very small at the fire district meeting. But the thing is that I think that we should be very careful using the One Call, One Call Now notification system. The statewide referendum, not on a ballot, if the Secretary of State sends out a mailing and has an explanation, we could do that probably on a postcard. And I'm not saying that I'm not, I'm automatically going to say no to the One Call notification system, but all elections are important, whether it's a presidential primary, a general election, or anything else. So I'm very leery of that, but I think that we've come a long ways with meetings in every election. Depends upon how people are interested in a particular vote. But not everybody gets the local papers, but that's just some of my observations. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Frank? Barbara and Scott both brought up a mailing thing. We've sat here for the last six years and cut fifty dollars from a budget. So to spend the six thousand four hundred and some voters, and that stamp and postcard is a dollar each, and there's two people per household, you're talking over three thousand dollars to send out a mailing. I think that's just, that's a little excessive. I wouldn't be in favor of a mailing. I'm all in favor of trying to figure out different ways. Barbara, I think your list is, is awesome, but to spend three thou, if you do it for one, you got to do it for all. So even if you did it for both budgets, that's six thousand dollars, just for the two, the chairhold and the municipal budget. So I mean, that, that I just is not economically feasible, to maybe gain an extra, you know, two hundred, two hundred votes.
Right. I said, that's the reason that that's the only one that really has money, because our citizens don't want us to spend it, and I don't actually blame them at all.
The, the Providence Journal advertising is very expensive, so that, you know, if you wanted to find out what the price is, I, I'm sure we could find out, but in the past, we stopped doing it because it was so expensive. I think that one problem in my mind, I know we have the referendum and, and it is the way it is now, but I for one miss the town financial meetings, and I really mean that. I know that they could be lively, but usually they were lively because something was wrong. And, but the good thing about the town financial meeting is that was the opportunity to find out what was going on. As you went from item to item and department to department, you'd hear from people and they'd tell you what was on their mind. So we've lost that. People are, don't need to come to the hearing because they're not going to vote on anything, and so we've lost those hundreds of people, and I mean hundreds, that used to come out. Remember the chairhold meetings when up to twelve hundred people would, would go? And you'd, we'd fill that auditorium. And there was one time that was, there was over five hundred people from Hopkinton that attended that, uh, one of the chairhold meetings, so, but it, that's lost, and I don't know if we'll, we'll ever go back to it, but that, that, that had value in my mind. The one opportunity or option that could be used, we do a mailing already, and that's the tax bill. Everybody gets a tax bill. And we've used it before where we put a little insert on for the One Call System to try to get people to, one last chance here, to make sure people knew we had it and how to, you know, access it, get your number on there. And I wonder if we, and it cost us something to have that little insert in there, but I wonder if in the tax bill, I think anything's always possible, that we add in generics. There are some generic dates. The chairhold school vote is always at a certain time, the third, whatever it is, of every year. The same thing for the town budget. When we have a town budget, it's the same Tuesday of every year. So that's something that we could put in. So if we want, we could move forward with a generic.
It wouldn't cost that much, actually.
It's going to cost, because it could be part of.
I don't think it costs anything.
It can be part, it'll be part of that bill. Just like on the bill, if you turn it over, the One Call is in there, but not everybody reads it. I mean, you can only go so far. You're going to knock on their door and say, make sure you read the other side of the, you know, but it's something, it's something we could do and wouldn't cost us anything. So, that's what I do. Sylvia, Frank? Okay, Frank and then Scott.
Yeah, I just had, bottom line is, I think we need to get the word out better. There wasn't enough people turned out to vote on, on very important matters such as taxes. You know, I think that's an, an emergency. If a tax bill is going to go up, I think people need to know about it, and just enough, not enough people did know about it. Whether it's putting signs at various locations, using the One Call Now system, any of those cheaper methods, I think, can be utilized to get the word out better, and I think we owe it to the citizens to do that, so. I certainly do, to the extent I've got emails, but it's not, it's not wide-reaching enough, so I think we need to come up with something better as a group and implement it, sooner rather than later.
Right, we should at least try it out for November.
I just think that Councilor Thompson and I wrote a letter supporting budget in the referendum, and I think any council or any, you know, some things are more important than others, and getting the town budget passed after we adopted it, you know, certainly the future of town government and what we were trying to accomplish. If we all pushed probably better that five votes, when you have an election that's only five votes one way or the other, anything could possibly determine the results of that election, because, uh, so, I mean, it could be debatable why it won or lost, but I think if we pushed a little harder, that five votes probably would have been made up. Water over the dam, as they say, but, uh, a lot of votes in Hopkinton are very, very close.
You want to get some water?
I know there's some.
Oh, how about one of these, maybe that'll help. There's also some folks in the audience that would like to speak. Barbara?
I, I just have one thing. I, I mean, I truly believe people do not know the vote is available. I truly believe that we need more and different ways to try to reach people, because I honestly, I don't think they know and refuse to come. I truly believe people are very busy with their lives, and we need to go over and above the norm to reach them. I know how busy I was raising three kids and working full-time, but it's very important that we attempt, just as, this is America. It's what we do.
Is there anyone from the audience? Ed, you had your hand up, and anyone else that wants to speak?
Ed Goff from Woodville Road. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm glad the council finally has moved on this. I brought this issue up two years ago. I don't know, it took so long, but it's being addressed, and I applaud you for at least getting to that point right now. My concern is that anyone in the council thinking that the voters do not care in town in Hopkinton, that is entirely wrong. When I ran for council, I spoke to probably fifteen hundred people. And everyone I spoke to, one thing I would say to them, did you vote in last election? They would stay in their kind of sheepish sleep. I said, um, did you vote or you didn't vote? He said, no, I didn't. Could you tell me why you didn't vote? I don't know. I said, did you get a notification? No. I said, that's the reason why you didn't vote. Now, so that's to clarify, that people do care, they just don't know what's going on. I don't know what the perfect solution is, I'm not the brightest guy in the world. Again, I understand about money and it being, wanting to be spent, but I'm saying to myself, as Sylvia said, if you're going to send out a, a bill, I don't care what's your tax bill or for your car, for your, for your property, or some kind of notification, how about having something printed on it that would say, would you please send the town hall your email address? Now, if you sent out the six thousand tax bills and you got that back, you might only get three, three thousand back, fifty percent, which I think would be tremendous. If you only get two hundred, and I'll say, for the last three elections I can recall concerning taxes, we've never had more concerning taxes, we've never had more than three percent. Like, one was one fifty, the other one's like, the last one was like one ninety-two, and the other one's probably in between that. And, you know, so, in three elections, it's not that people aren't voting, they don't care, because as you as a council know, they complain about their tax bill, so if they knew there was gonna be a vote, I'm pretty sure they would vote, it's just that they need to be notified. But I would suggest they're putting something on, whatever notifications you send out to the, to the taxpayers, that sends us your email, and this is how you can accomplish your, your database without interfering with any laws concerning other, other things. And if you get, like I said, half of the people respond, and then as new people come into the town, we get almost a requirement, could you give us your, your email address, so we can notify you of, of elections, of our tax bills, or anything's going on in the town. And, like I say, you're already spending the money for that notification anyway, I think would be a lot easier. Thank you.
Wait a minute, you know, um, one of the things I, and I'm gonna turn to you, um, and I, this is probably being silly, but when you have, um, you, you're trying to get the word out, there's always gonna be somebody who's gonna have, well, you didn't tell me. If we had, if we did something and we started a database and we started to collect emails, if we sent out a notification to what, to emails we did have, are we, are we distant, are they being distant franchise with the other people because of, I don't know, is there...
I don't know either, but I think you gotta be careful about how you approach links, do it as comprehensively as you can. It's not terribly different than collecting the phone numbers for the One Call Now system, you know, some people provide, some people don't, you know? I mean, you wouldn't get my email address out of me like that for this kind of thing, you know what I mean? I don't give it out, because I don't want this kind of stuff.
Right, you don't want stuff, yeah.
I mean, and you're gonna find plenty of people who are gonna say that, you know? So, I mean, I think if you're gonna do something like that, you build your database as compreh as you can, so.
He's right, if you get fifty percent, that's at least fifty percent.
Can I say one part?
Yeah, go ahead.
Probably, if you, you don't wanna send out cards, the other solution is to advertise in Wood River Press, which goes to virtually blankets the town, other than, I think, the Bradford section, which is about the Hopkinton Press, so if you're advertising on two papers, just a small notice, it might cost you maybe a couple hundred dollars, that's probably the closest you can do with saturation coverage without doing the One Call. That's just a potential solution.
I think that's a good idea, too. It's that if I ask someone if they get the Westerly Sun and they say no, I say, well, how do you get your news? And they'll say Providence Journal. So I thought, if they don't get the Sun, then maybe the Providence Journal. I know it's more expensive, but at least you might actually reach people that are not getting the Sun, and if they don't get the Sun, they might get the Wood River Press.
Well, they do, because it's...
But they may not read it.
All right, well, I think we've, um, we've covered the topic.
That's a, that's a potential solution.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to add any, any additional comments? Yes, please come up.
Ron McDonald, Emergency Management Director, I think I met most of you except the Madam President, I don't think you were here the night I was here, but, um, I have some answers in regards to the One Call Now system. I'm the one that threw up the yellow flag, just to, you know, send caution out. This came up because One Call Now GEO, which the town uses, just was bought out by another company called Code Red, which the town of Westerly uses. So they're gonna be taking over the account. So, in the process of this transformation, I was asked to contact 911 because they provide data, if you so choose to use it, for the other company. So that's when I found out that there was a state law that said, if you use 911's data from the state, you can't use it for anything besides, you know, imminent danger to public safety, you know, disaster, floods, or whatnot. And that's in, uh, Title Thirty-nine of the Public Utility and Carriers Law. So that's why, when I saw the agenda, 'cause, 'cause I browse through it usually on Sundays, just to make sure there isn't anything emergency management later they need to be here for, I saw that, and I just wanted to, to make the town manager aware, you know, that that was the case, so the town didn't find itself in a bind. The reason that people use a 911 database is because that data is more current, that's provided right by the phone companies, such as Verizon, Cox, and Vonage, and whoever else people have, and that also has the unlisted phone numbers. And that's why 911 doesn't allow people to, to use that for non-emergency purposes, because they've had a few towns that use the data, and they send out notifications for like garbage collection, and then the people get upset, and they file complaints with the state. So, when I called One Call Now, I called them a couple times today, they finally got back to me at five forty on my way home from work, um, they said they do not believe that the 911 data was used in the town's One Call Now system.
You were right, Tom.
I didn't think it was.
Yeah, which is, which is good. But when we transition over to the other company, you know, there has to be a decision made whether, you know, you want those hundred-plus people that are unlisted, that 911 told me, in that system, or if you just wanna leave it. Those companies use like the White Pages and Yellow Pages, they buy that from private developers, whatever, and then you use the data that, you can go on the website and type in yourself. So that has to be a decision made, and I guess if you don't use the 911 data, then you're okay. From an emergency response standpoint, my only concern is, if you, you know, if you're only using it once or twice a year, I guess that's fine, but my concern is, I wouldn't wanna see it used for, you know, voting, then announcing, you know, recreation...
Right.
Town fairs and everything else, 'cause then people are gonna become complacent, and then they're gonna deregister themselves and take themselves out of the list, and then you won't have, you know, as many residents in there to get the emergency notifications. So...
Lisa?
Last week, when the two notifications went out about the food centers, first of all, they doesn't want those types of things, maybe we...
Yeah, um, I had to, Lisa, you're all set, okay. I had in the past, when this came up before, and I forgot to mention it, but I do agree with Councilor Harris, and in the past, I was of the opinion, when this came up before, that I really thought that One Call is just for emergencies, even if you're able to take out the 911, and I, and only because I thought that eventually it's gonna be used by future councils for other reasons. And I, I think you start, once you start, it can lead to something else, and lead to something else. So, um, I don't know, I have mixed feelings about it. I guess you do, too, you're like...
Well, no, I mean, I think it's a great way to get the word out. Again, I'm not in favor of using the 911 phone numbers, again, if those one hundred are eliminated and we've got a fresh list to use, I think it's an option. I'll leave it on the table. I mean, I, I don't know what it costs, maybe Bill can, can, can let us know, I don't really know what the cost is of using, using it, uh, One Call Now, but I'd love to know that, before I made a decision about it.
The cost of the system?
Yeah, like each time you make an announcement, is there an additional cost?
Oh, no, you, no, it's a, we're currently under a four-year contract that expires in September of two thousand and twelve, and I think the total cost was, for all four years, was nine thousand dollars. It's about three thousand dollars a year, and they threw, because we were a first-time subscriber, they threw the fourth year in free.
I think, yeah, I think it's, I, I wanna leave it on the table, too, because I, I agree Sil, with Sylvia's issues that it might overuse, but what we could do is make it subject to EMA and the town manager. We could have it subject to you, um, to explain that, you know, this is something that is, you know, town-wide, we need to reach people, but it could be subject not to the council, but to the town manager or EMA.
Or maybe a very specific restrictive policy, maybe that would help.
I think we need to do a little more investigating, I think we have to determine whether or not we can in fact identify and remove those unlisted telephone numbers from the database, because you certainly can't use the database if they're included in there, uh, because of the 911 regulations and, and the state law that, that Ron had mentioned, so, uh, we need to determine whether or not they can be identified and subsequently removed from the system.
How do they get the unlisted numbers? Because you said they get the white and the yellow pages, but they wouldn't be there.
People would sign up.
People sign up online.
911, I think.
Yeah, well, what, what originally, uh, when I, when I talked to the woman at 911 to see how we'd, we'll get the data, the town was given a password, it must have been years ago, when they first started the system, 'cause there were old names, the former police chief, um, the former police lieutenant, and there were a couple other people, and the regulations say those people have to be removed immediately if they're no longer in the position, so that's why we had to reset and, and sign the agreement. As long as we don't use their data, um, you're fine. So we didn't know if that was used until five forty tonight, and the gentleman was almost sure that it wasn't in there. So, but right now, we have, this is kind of fluid because that other company is taking over, and we don't really know, plus the contract's almost up, so we don't really know even if the price is gonna be the same, or if we have to, you know, substantially more, if we have to look at another company.
Do you know if any other cities and towns are using it, the system for other things, other than Richmond?
Um, I know Charleston and Richmond use One Call Now, what they use it for...
Voting.
I'm not sure if they, if they use that.
In Richmond, they, because there are Hopkinton residents that get the calls, because they're, they're just in the system.
They're, they're nearby, they're like in Prospect Square, so, you know, they have a Wyoming, um, zip code, but they're in the town of Hopkinton.
I know some towns use two systems, and, you know, some towns have like two systems, or they have a separate email listserv, or, or Twitter for non-emergency things, and the only reason I, when I saw it on the agenda, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew before they made a decision...
No, I appreciate it very much.
...whether that was in there or not, 'cause I didn't want the town to get into a jam if it was used and somebody complained.
I think the Charahoe School system uses One Call Now also.
Yes. The one the school uses is still staying One Call Now, we have the GEO, which is map-based, we can evacuate, if some certain area's flooding, or a certain hazmat is in a certain area, you can circle out and just evacuate those people. Like, the schools, churches, and other organizations that use the regular One Call Now are gonna stay, the GEO people are going to the, the Code Red system, and that's what we don't really know. We're right in the process, very in the infant stages of the transformation over, so we don't really know what's gonna happen over the next month or so, so...
I think that was why I wanted to make a list of ten or twelve things that we could do, some that would cost nothing, we didn't know what was happening with One Call Now. I know we're not fond of sending out postcards and spending money, um, but I wanted to make an entire list because so many people have these huge email lists, we may be able to access peoples and start crossing, um, as well, which is certainly not gonna cost us something. But I'm glad you're looking into it, and I'm sure we're quite interested in where it is, because I believe Tom is right, our beginnings had nothing to do with 911.
Well, we were here when we instituted...
Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight.
Thank you very much.
Where do you, uh, live?
I live in Westlake.
You live in Westlake, good, so you're a little nearby, that's good.
I studied the agendas and stuff, so I was off there.
Do you check the agendas statewide?
No.
No, just locally?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh, just to reiterate, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned, as I was back then when I first brought this up, of, of the abuse that could very easily take place.
Sure.
Um, there's no reason to put an election on One Call Now. If people don't understand that there's a presidential election...
Well, let's say a presidential. I think town, town vote.
They need, they don't need to be told that we're having an election. I think if we use it for the purpose that we're looking at...
Budget.
It's budgetary, and there's only two per year, which is the town and Charahoe.
That's it.
Those are the only two issues, and it needs to be strictly regulated as to what the wording can say, and so it's not anything but, okay...
Getting the word out.
The word's there, that's it. I mean, the budget, it's a town budget vote on this day, from this time to this time, at town hall, and you can get a copy of it online at, period. And that's, that's, I mean, it really needs to be really short and sweet, so it can't be deviated from it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, uh, next up, public forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak at our last public forum? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Uh...
Someone moved.
Who moved it? Wait a minute, who did which, what?